Good evening. Today is May 23rd, 2022. It is 6:30 PM. We are meeting at 6:30. We do have an executive session. I need to first read a statement regarding OPMA. This meeting is being called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of May 23rd, 2022 was included in the list of meetings noticed sent to the Huntington County Democrat and Courier-News on January 5th, 2022, posted on the bulletin board at Borough Hall on that date, and has remained continuously posted as required. In addition, a copy of this notices and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. We do have an executive session this evening. If we could have a motion on Resolution 2022 to actually Sally call the roll call first. I'm so sorry. I'm all out of storage because I'm not in my right to see.
Mayor Driver?
Here.
Ms. Hand?
Here.
Mr. Johnston?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Parker is absent. Ms. Rosetti?
Here.
Ms. Tilly?
Here.
Okay.
And that's an excused absence Sally for Mr. Parker?
Yeah, yeah, he's away. He's out of town.
If we could have a motion on Resolution 2022-127 entering into executive session for the purpose of interviewing a candidate for the position of Borough Clerk/Business Administrator.
Tilly, I'll move.
Handle second.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, we are now going into executive session at 6:33 PM.
Excellent. I just want to make note to everybody that we're kind of scattered all over the place. Tony is absent. Liz and Jess are not in the council meeting room, nor am I due to various states of sickness and other things going on. My camera will likely be off for most of this meeting, but I'll have my microphone muted as well, so you don't have to listen to me cough up a lung. But I'll be here, so if you need anything, just give me a shout. So Sally, go ahead and pause the recording.
Yeah.
Good. Good evening. This is, we've just come out of the executive session.
Hold on a second, the door's not open. Now we're open.
Okay. A good evening. We have just kind of wrapping up an executive session where we're interviewing a candidate. We're now going into the work session. We do have a work session, and my apologies for those who weren't here for the work session with the Huntington County Governors Association and the Governing Officers Association President Paul Muir, and Vice President Michael Humphrey, who is on council up in Clinton Town. So welcome Paul and Mike, and the floor is yours. If you want to, Sally, we need to turn on two cameras, the applicant camera as well as the public view meeting camera. Excellent. Hey, guys. Welcome. Floor is yours. We're gonna hear about the Huntington County Governing Officers Association. And again, I will introduce Paul Muir. He's the Huntington County Governing Officers Association President. Paul's also the mayor of Bethlehem Township and Vice President Michael Humphrey, who is the also on council up in Clinton Town. So tell us all about each of you gentlemen.
First, I appreciate your time.
We're all mixed up. We're all over the place tonight.
I appreciate your time. And as I said, this is my first time in your Borough Hall, so. It's fun. It's fun with you quite a bit. It's been elected for, it's my 12th year having been here, so thank you. I love the room. So I appreciate your time. So we're really trying to get the Huntington County Governing Officials Association restarted last year. We had kind of a happy year, and then I was interim president. All the roles were interim, so we're back in full effect this year. We're really just trying to get the word out the best way that we can, so that's, you know, in person is the best way, so we appreciate your time again. The key is we're looking to create an association for all elected officials within Huntington County and also professionals, so municipal attorneys and engineers can also join planners, but the key is really for the elected officials. And so we really want to take the politics out of local government and sit down together and talk about the topics that are all impacting us and figuring out how to do that best together and opening up those conversations and creating paths to better serve all of our residents. And that's the key. And then we had one, our reorganization meeting this year. I would say it was very informal. We had some great conversations about politics, taking it out and about some of the things that impact our town. We try to meet on the fourth Tuesday of every month because that was what is most free for everybody's meeting, so it was June 28th is the next meeting. Without looking, so if it's a date wrong, I apologize, but it's the fourth Tuesday. And we do try to move them around the county, so we haven't chosen a location for that yet, but we just, we do want to make them available, easy for everybody to do. It's usually dinner. So that's why, again, it's more so that we'll try to have a presenter, but it's not very formal, have a dinner, buy some drinks, just networking in the beginning, and people can enjoy time together. And then again, get to know each other so that if I have an issue or there's something that you're doing here in Huntington, I think is really great, and I wanted to mentor up in Bethlehem, I know I can call up and say, hey, how does that work? Can you point me in the right direction?
Yeah, I think, you know, there are issues that individual towns would have a hard time, if not impossible, to solve, that can be solved when coming together with other, with other towns. At our most recent meeting, we had, at our most recent meeting, we had Mark Salat with the Nowitz Department of Economic Development towards where the county. And he was talking about that he was rolling out the tourism plan that they have, which, you know, they already did the, they already have the 579 trail, they're rolling out the beer trail, which I still need to do.
I mean, you're gonna make that the governing officials?
I think so.
Trip because I haven't done that either.
But, but he was talking about, you know, kind of a developing a master plan for tours that would bring in people from all around the region, get them to know how their county is, and get them to stop at the the areas like Flemington and Clinton and Lambertville and Frenchtown and other places, right? Spend a whole weekend. And that's just one. Many ideas after I'd, we had a pretty long discussion about how towns were, were getting by, you know, the issues that they were dealing with. And so I, the great thing is the conversations are all predictable, and they're just brought up by people who were there, but they drive some great conversations and learning environments, but more importantly, now I know a lot more people that I can contact because I'm not the smartest person in the room, so I like to look for the person who fits, you know?
And if there is an issue that we need to advocate for, this is, I would say sanctioned by the New Jersey League of Municipals, so it's like your county league. And so you're not by Huntington County. A lot of times we get forgotten because we're all groupings of smaller towns, but if we're coming there and saying we represent, you know, all 26, if there's an issue that five or six have, I think it gives us a lot more capacity to approach either legislature or utility or some other entity that we might have an issue with than just one town alone does. And so that's, I think, a phenomenal benefit, especially, I know for many Bethlehem people, forget we're up there in the northern part of the county, so it's great to work with others.
Do you guys have a website or something that we can follow or look for like updated meeting information, or how do we get involved?
We should set up a Facebook.
I was just saying, yeah, we have a website. I think the Facebook page is what we're gonna go with, and so.
I would submit, we do have an executive director.
Yes.
He's the executive director for Somerset County, for Warren County, and then this is the third one that he does. He helps us arrange meetings, get communications out, things of that nature. No.
I think, well, as I said, and it's, it's, I don't know anybody who's, Ed's been around for quite some time. He's mayor of Rocky Hill up in Somerset. He's running actually this year after some time off. But I think a lot of the emails, you may have seen emails from us, but they're from Ed, and so.
Yeah, I have seen those.
Yes. And I've asked that, you know, from now on, like we've been set, I guess, every day on June, so the next meeting, you know, probably come from me, because this way, not that everybody knows me, but at least you'll see maybe Huntington County name that you affiliate, and then hopefully, so I think there's some other councils that are gracious enough to allow us in, so they'll kind of connect that with our name. And yeah, we hadn't set up the website, but I think social media is the best place to start. We'll probably make it a closed group and just send something out so that you join, because we're not looking for public comment, we're just looking to be able to get information out amongst ourselves, so we can meet efficiently. And like I said, there is a call to action. We can put it on there too, in addition to the emails. Yeah.
Is there a fee to join?
There's not.
No.
The only thing is if you come to the dinner, you're responsible for covering your own costs. A lot of municipalities do a bachelor, we do a bachelor's. And so that's only, the only cost is wherever it is for dinner. We try to find places that are reasonable, so it's usually like $30 at the most.
Great.
That's good. So I was at a couple of the organizing meetings, but unfortunately, the fourth Tuesday is also planning board for Flemington Borough, which is why I dropped off. So. But that doesn't mean council members can't go. Hint, hint.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, if I was interested.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Just for all elected officials.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'm interested.
So look for it at June.
Yeah, absolutely. I know we've talked about this years ago down at Land City.
Yeah, so Huntington County had an association probably about 10 years ago, and so I was like Commissioner Van Doren was, is a committee person. He was on it then. And he stuck around. It's kind of like, I'd say as our past president, even though it's a 10-year hiatus, but it's nice to just kind of have that connection and then kind of, you know, can share with us, you know, the successes and the challenges from then. Really, right now, the biggest challenge is getting the word back out, especially coming off, you know, we started this, still during the pandemic, so we had some in-person meetings last year, but the comfort level wasn't always there, so hopefully we're getting, you know, more comfortable coming out, meeting in person, and getting the work out of the group.
Are you looking for just like mayor and council or Board of Education as well?
We're trying to keep the Board of Ed out. Yeah.
Well, they've got their own problem.
We made another discussion of how it impacts our town. We got a candid discussion as elected officials. That's one of the topics that we may end up talking about. So this way, it's there for our conversations.
Yeah, but as he mentioned before, you know, the other professionals that serve towns definitely invited because it gives us perspective and be able to answer questions. Because, you know, we're, what our council members were, we're not the experts, you know, so it's good to have them there.
Is there an approval process for some of those subcontractors?
Actually, not officially, but that's part of the capacity to is, is if we have more members, if somebody has an issue with somebody, I'm sure we'll be able to address it.
Okay.
We have a few municipal authorities at this point, but no, not a lot of other professionals have been coming out yet.
They'll come out, have them sponsor the dinners.
Resume meeting. So we rotate them through the council, so we haven't set, so June 28th is the next meeting, but we haven't set a location yet, so we'll get that out. Probably, I'm hoping next week we'll figure out a location.
Yeah, we've had, pretty much ago, we had it over at the Rock.
Yeah.
Cheney Rock.
Yeah. And then we had it at Spain.
Yeah, I dragged everybody to the organization to Bethlehem, to Spain, and we were at Pino's in township. So, but we do try to make it around the county, so we'll probably try to push this next one closer to this area, or maybe, look, even South County, and see what we come up with.
Good. If you need a contact, you can always email me information, and I can get that out to the council. That's easiest for me, so.
Thank you for your time.
Like, what time do you guys meet? Like sevenish?
Sure, yeah, I think, we use it like a cocktail hour from 6:30 to 7:00 for some of the networking. And then, and then the restaurants kind of work with us, like, when they bring food out for speakers, the speaker usually starts at 7:00 to 7:20. It's not a drawn-out presentation, then we ask questions, and whoever our presenter stays usually for the dinner, so there's open conversation after that. And then we're usually wrapped up, like, we're gonna wrap up about 9:00 at the ball, depends on how social, how many questions people have for each other.
Awesome.
Excellent.
Yeah.
I'm glad it's during non-working hours, because I find that there's so many things.
Always.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you very much. I look forward to seeing you all out there.
And you will, thank you.
I lost my mind more than you. Thank you for your time.
Michael, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks for coming, guys. Okay, so we're gonna go in and adjourn for eight minutes, and we'll be back at 7:30. Sally, if you could pause the recording?
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. Today is May 23rd, 2022. This is the regular council meeting of the mayor and county council, the Borough of Flemington. This meeting is being held in conformance with the Open Public Meetings Act, and it's be, it's meeting of May 23rd, 2022, was included in a list of meetings noticed sent to the Huntington County Democrat Courier-News on January 5th, 2022, posted on the bulletin board at Borough Hall on that date, and has remained continuously posted as required. In addition, a copy of this notices and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. We did have an executive session earlier for the purpose of interviewing a candidate for the position of Borough Clerk/Business Administrator. I expect us to have a very short executive session at the conclusion of this meeting as well concerning contract negotiations, and I'll ask one of the council members to make a motion to do that. Shouldn't take more than 10 or 15 minutes. No action on the work session will be taken this evening. If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Sally, go ahead and take the roll, please.
Mayor Driver?
Here. Kind of.
Ms. Hand?
Also here, kind of.
Mr. Johnston?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Parker is excused. Ms. Rosetti?
Here.
Ms. Tilly?
Oh, I'm here.
All righty.
Okay, good evening. You'll notice tonight we're kind of truly a hybrid in-person and remote meeting. Number of various sickness, family members sick, myself, I'm quite, I've been struggling with pneumonia. So unfortunately, I am down for the count for now. And I will have my camera off and my microphone off for much of the meeting, however, I'm here, and that's just to spare you the horrible sound of a lung coming up as I start to cough. I have a very brief mayor's report this evening. Everybody should have received postcards to come to Borough Hall and pick up two bags per household of our lovely reusable shopping bags that we had printed up using clean community grant money, which was one of the uses, permitted uses for that clean community grant money is to buy things like reusable shopping bags, and that's what we chose to do this year with that money, given the bad plastic bag ban that is now in effect throughout the state of New Jersey. So if you could come and pick those up, I can see them on the camera back there. We're waiting for people to come. Last Friday, myself and the Borough engineer Jerry Harris had a meeting with our Trenton Legislative District 16 representatives. That was Senator Andrew Zwicker, his staff members, as well as Assemblywoman Sadef Sadef Jaffer, and her staff member, and I believe there was a staff member there from Senator Freiman, or excuse me, Assemblyman Freiman's office as well. We talked about some funding requests that the Borough has regarding infrastructure and other things as the state's working on their budget. I attended the Firemen's Women's Banquet last Saturday. It was a week ago Saturday. It was quite lovely. I also attended the NAACP inaugural meeting last Sunday. It was quite good. And DIY ribbon cutting as well last Saturday. It was a busy weekend around Flemington last weekend, so I hope everybody was able to get out and see stuff on that first really lovely spring, spring weekend. It was quite nice. We could go ahead and start with Jess Hand. He was also remote this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a very short report. Last Monday, we had an environmental commission meeting. We did do a hyper meeting, but I was the only one in Borough Hall, so so that was, we pulled it off, but it was, it was difficult. We talked about some sustainable jersey items and doing more events to get more people involved in the Environmental Commission, and that is it for me.
Okay. Next up is Councilman Johnston.
Hi, Mayor. Thank you. From the Shade Tree, every, excuse me, Arbor Day went well. There was a new teacher, Helen Harley Wayne, right? Who was a big help with the planted tree. And we chose the tree. We paid for it, and we had it delivered. I believe that was April 28th. Hazmat trees are being updated. Shade Tree is also looking to secure a table at the 4-H County Fair coming up. And we also, I also wanted to give a shout out to new volunteer Jane Cannon. You're doing an awesome job. The Mother's Day event that was scheduled for the 7th, there was terrible weather. I think there was some sort of warning from, and it kind of, not stating or something. But it was rescheduled to like Saturday, the 14th. And Donna Gerthry and Julia Whitley and Kelly Touchman did an awesome job moving everything around. The turnout was about 25 people. They took home pots to paint in color. We want to give a special thank you to Shopbrake for donating $200 for refreshments. Don't forget the yoga classes have started on Tuesdays at 6:30. The instructor's name is Ava. Last week, we had a turnout of 13 people, which is awesome, so I'm looking forward to going myself tomorrow. So hopefully I'll see some of the people in the backyard. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next up is Council President Jeremy Long.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I have several things here tonight. As far as the police department, they just want to remind people that the Memorial Day Parade will have multiple street closures. And that would be North Main Street at Hopewell, East Main Street at Jersey Ave, Pennsylvania Avenue at Broad, Bloomfield Ave at Broad Street, Maple Ave at Broad, William Street at Broad, Broad Street between William and Route 12, Church Street, Route 31, and Brown Street, Main Street between the Main Street Circle, the Monument, Main Street at Park Avenue, and then Capper at Park Avenue. On May 11th, I attended the 200 Club of Huntington County Awards Dinner at the Dinner. Corporal Brian McNally, Controlman Fred Manuel, represented with Meritorious Service Awards for performing CPR on a car accident victim back in 2019. They ended up, you know, stabilizing him, and he was, he survived that. Also receiving awards were Marvin D'Nello Agüeta, Daniel Calix, and Franklin Calix of the Huntington Hills Apartments Complex. They saved a fellow resident from a burning apartment. Despite, you know, the danger, they, they walked, they ran in there and got, broke his door down and got him out of there. So those were some distinguished honors that evening. It was great to be there and see that. On Sunday, a rally was held in town, we're worship rites. The rally lasted about an hour and everything went well. There were no issues, and I'd like to thank all involved for their work planning and maintaining the event. Our police department is also is always prepared for these kinds of events and should be committed on always handling the finer details associated with any rally, protest, or demonstration that takes place in the borough. As of this week, bike patrols are go. Officers will be trolling on bicycles. You see that, you should see them around and about. FCP is proud to announce they have the most jam-packed spring and summer calendar ever due to new events from new businesses and return to past events. You can check out the loveflemington.com website and events to see what's going on. To search by date or type of, type or type of date, I'm sorry, to search by date or type of event, you can search them on that, sorry, I apologize. Search the website. I don't know why I'm having trouble speaking right now. We have free yoga classes starting tonight, tomorrow night, and on Saturday morning, and free dog walks on Wednesdays. Come join the fun. We have a sensational calendar of events this Memorial Day holiday weekend. Join us for our first Thursday night out, night out with the Summer Swing Orchestra from 5:30 to 8:30, weather permitting. Do check out the website again for rain updates later this week. The rain date for that is July 21st, sorry. This weekend is the Act Two Summer Book Festival and Fine Artisans Fair, tons of other events from Thursday to Monday, including the animal parade, as I mentioned before. The car show returns to Main Street on June 5th, always exciting. We've moved our annual stakeholder event to Wednesday, June 22nd, more to five. Civic engagement this week, I will be viewing a kickoff event from the New Jersey Alliance for Civic Engagement. I hope to take what I learn and use it to help get our own civic engagement committee up and running. Want to thank my fellow council member, Tony Parker, for often assisting me in this endeavor. I anticipate quite a bit of work getting done this summer, and that is my report. Thank you.
I forgot something.
Thank you. Next up is Elizabeth Rosetti.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm excited to hear about all these great events going on, but personally, I don't have anything to share tonight. So I think Malik said he had something he forgot, so let's go back to him.
Okay, Malik.
Thank you. I also was at the NAACP inauguration. I'm a founding member of this new chapter. And I also was at the DIY as well, and that was really awesome to see everybody come out from the community.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Next up is Councilwoman Kim Tilly.
On the 10th, I had a fire officers meeting where I spoke about new fire apparatus that is desperately needed. I also attended the Fire Department Ladies Night. That was a fun time, I hope, all. The 17th, I had a DPW meeting where we talked about, everybody will see the street sweeping signs are out again. It's that time to street sweep. A couple of catch basins were rebuilt on Broad Street. We're having some traffic issues that DPW committee wants investigated. Then the 17th, followed by a Liberty Village redevelopment meeting. The 18th, I had an HPC meeting. Oh, back to DPW. If you put out any bulk items for last Friday's bulk pickup without a bulk sticker, it was not picked up. It needs to be removed or disposed of. The Borough will not be doing that. Jeremy said that Monday, May 30th, is the Memorial Day Parade, and that's gonna run from Church Street to the Monument on Veterans Way. And I look forward to attending the Music on Main on Thursday, the 26th, from 5:30 to 8:30. And that is it for me.
Excellent. Thank you. That brings us to our first public comment session, if you are a member of the public in there here and would like to speak. Is there anybody in the audience? I see nobody on the west side of the room. Is there anybody else on the other side?
If you see your.
Just saying hi. Not saying anything, sorry.
And if you're online and would like to speak, you can click on the raisehand.com. And I don't see anybody phoning in. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. If we could have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 9, 2022 regular council meeting?
Tilly, I'll move.
Hold on a second.
All right, Ms. Hand?
Epstein.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. How about somebody make a motion on?
I just had it moved for a second. A motion to approve the minutes of the May 9, 2022 executive, executive session.
Tilly, I'll move.
Hold on a second.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Next up is the consent agenda. We do have six items on there. If we could have a make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Tilly, I'll move.
Hold on a second.
Anybody want anything pulled out? Sally, go ahead and call the vote.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, that's approved.
That brings us to our regular agenda. The first item is First Reading Ordinance 2022-7. This is an ordinance to amend the code of the Borough of Flemington by adding Section 2-30, establishing a community emergency response team, also known as the CERT. Kim?
Tilly, I'll move. Oh, do you want me to talk about it?
After we, after it's on the floor, yeah.
Hold on a second.
But I figured you'd want to move it. But I figured you'd want to move it. Kim, you want to give us just the Cliff Notes version as to for this?
Yeah, the CERT team is a new team that is established in the Borough to assist with the emergency responders. How do we respond? It would be like when the, there was a fire at the apartments, CERT would be able to either help organize the residents were displaced, or help with traffic control.
You know, support?
Just support somehow with the first responders down early. If there's a land search for a missing person, CERT usually called for that. One of CERT's functions is to set up a shelter if and when needed. You know, that would again fall with the fire that they had. The people were displaced, the CERT would set up the shelter. We also help with traffic management during parades and such. Doesn't necessarily stay within the Borough. The Borough Team will help other teams that are needed or in need in Huntington County, as well as Huntington County's other teams would come to the Borough to help us, like they are doing for the Memorial.
Thank you. Sally, could you call the vote on the first reading?
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Tara, do I need to abstain since I am one of the members, the initial members?
Of the CERT?
Of the CERT team?
Uh, no.
Okay, then yes.
Okay, that's introduced. The public hearing on that ordinance will be at the next council meeting, which is June thirteen, June thirteenth.
Excellent. Next up is Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash one thirty-four, authorizing the closing of Stingle Road from church to mine. Stingle Road doesn't intersect with Church Street.
I guess technically it does.
From Church Street to Mine Street from four PM to ten PM on September seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two. Yeah, that's actually not Church Street, so we may want to reword that. Tara, can they just make that, that, that change? And I don't know if you want to call it church. It's technically not.
You can make the motion a second for the resolution and even not make a motion to amend.
I don't know what to call it, though.
I'm sorry, that's it?
Said, I'm not quite sure what to call it.
Well, Central Station, isn't it?
No, it's that little extension up at Church Street. That's the entrance into Liberty Village. That's that little connector.
Oh, there.
Yeah. I mean, I guess you can call it church.
This is what we called it in the past, so I don't know.
Okay.
Is there a map attached to the resolution?
Well, it's not attached to the resolution. It's attached to the permit, but.
Well, you can just amend it to say as reflected in the permit allocation.
Okay, so that's a mine. Okay.
All right, Tilly, I'll move.
Long a second.
No.
Sally, go ahead and call the vote.
All right, Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, that's approved.
Next up is Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash one thirty-five. This is authorizing agreements with CME associates for three traffic analysis. If we could have a motion?
Tilly, I'll move.
Long a second.
Excellent. So the Public Works Committee has asked our traffic engineer, which is with CME, to study three areas around town. Church, excuse me, Broad Street between Church and, well, to consider, putting some, no parking areas there. We, we have a bottleneck situation there. It causes line of sight issues. It also causes emergency vehicle response issues because people park on both sides of the road. It narrows it down and only one car can pass, and it's a little bit of a traffic concern. So that study's going to look at how much of that one, how much and what side of the road we should consider doing a no parking on, on that road. It probably be the west side, but don't take my word for it. That's gonna be up to the traffic engineer. The other one is at Weathering at Corker, and you know, we've been trying to do work on Corker, and we're trying to rebuild that street with infrastructure, water and sewer, new pavement, curbing and sidewalks. So we're having a real problem with that. The engineers having some design issues in that area. And it has to do with the narrow street. So we thought maybe if we were to make that a one-way street, it could help the design and help us rebuild that street so that it's a, I mean, it's, it's in really bad shape. If you've been at Corker lately, you know, and part of that's just because the difficulty in doing that work there. That one, and then there's a third one. Kim, help me out here. What was the third one?
I think William Street and Stangle.
Crosswalks on Stangle, yes. And there's gonna be, we want to put some mid, mid-block crosswalks in on Stangle, down near the brewery, probably somewhere on DIY as well. And we have to do a traffic study on that because the state DOT frowns upon mid-block crosswalks. So when we go to the DOT with our crosswalk request, we have the evidence to back it up as, as a public safety issue. And it is a public safety issue, as you know, when you've been on Stangle, there's we're lacking in crosswalks there, and there should have been more put in when that road was redone, but there wasn't. So we can only move forward and fix what we have at this point. Are there any questions on that? Sally, go ahead and call the vote.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, that's approved.
Next up is Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash one thirty-six, authorizing an agreement with CME associates for engineering services for the William Street Improvement Projects from Broad to Elwood Avenue. If we could have a motion?
Tilly, I'll move.
Long a second.
Any discussion? Sally, go ahead and call the vote.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Okay, that's approved.
Okay. Next up is Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash one thirty-seven, authorizing a street closure on Fulper Road for a summer siesta community event, June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. If we could have a motion?
Tilly, I'll move.
Handle second.
It's, it's the holiday, or?
Cause she's retired.
The Huntington County United Way was planning to do a Sank of the Mayo event, and they got called off because of the rain, so they're changing it to a summer siesta, I think, as well.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is. Sally, if you'd call, is there any other comments or questions on that? Sally, go ahead and call the vote.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, that's approved.
Excellent. That brings us to our second public comment session. If you have a member of the public who would like to make a comment, you can step up to the microphone. If you're online watching us, you can raise your hand by clicking on the raisehand.com. Seeing none, let's go ahead and move on. Do we have an attorney's report?
Yes, very short. We'll have two matters for executive session at the end, just because they came up pretty much on Friday, Thursday and Friday of last week. I finally heard back from Comcast on the cable franchise ordinance, so we can talk about what Comcast came back with. And then also further discussions on possible property acquisition by the Borough. And then the other thing is, if you see Mike Campion or Jerry Harris, our engineer from CME, give them a big high five. They were able to figure out a very complicated issue involving the refurbishment of the water tower with cell equipment on it. They worked with the cell companies, with the tank contractor, and they figured out a solution where the facilities can stay on the tank. They paint around them. They only have to be down for a few hours. It's cost-effective for everybody. And it was really just Mike and Jerry's hard work and sticking with it to get, you know, get it there. And they were able to get everybody to, to work together on this. So I think it's a real, it's a real benefit to the Borough, to the cell companies. It's, it is a fantastic result that I didn't envision it turning out this wonderfully, but I think because of the, the professionals the Borough has with Jerry and Mike, it really was a great outcome. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Could we have a motion to pay some bills?
Tilly will move.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, that's approved.
Excellent. Can we have a motion to go into executive session, please, to discuss contract negotiations regarding Comcast as well as property acquisition?
Tilly, I'll move.
Long a second.
Just for the record, no, no action will be taken.
No action will be taken. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, we are going to be going into executive sessions at fifty-seven PM.
Have a good night.
See you, Ricky.
I'm gonna stop the recording or, you know, pause the recording.
I don't think that meeting was locked.
It's not locked now.
I don't know. It says seven participants. I don't know. I only see six bubbles. I don't know.
No, there's an attendee. Oh. So, good evening. Welcome back. We were coming out of executive session and you want to open the door?
Yeah. There's nobody here.
Okay. No action will be taken on the items discussed in executive session. Could we have a motion to adjourn?
Tilly will move.
Long a second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Who's ready opposed? All right, we are adjourned.
Yeah, so Sally, I had locked it, and maybe, I don't know, if you went in and unlocked it?
I thought I locked it, and then I got up to go close the door, so maybe we just crossed, or couldn't have been, no, because that computer's still going. It's just a two minutes off. Yeah. I, I don't know, Betsy. I think we might have canceled each other out on that.
Good evening, everyone.
You feel better?
Thank you.